Good evening, everyone. We will be starting momentarily. At this time, I'd like to call to order the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, December the first, 2025, in council chambers. It is now eight oh five P. M. All of those who are able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, for the record, could you make sure that we have a quorum this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening in council chambers. We have Council Member Steph, Council Member Rogers, Mayor Pro Tem Wolfley, Mayor Adams, and Council Member Emdebe Madu.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor to the council for any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Hearing none, we will move on to citizen participation.
The two from the chamber will be separate. It won't be coming up together, the two gentlemen from the chamber.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. And good evening, everyone. My name is Takisha Brown, and I am a resident in the City of Bowie, and I have been a resident of Prince George's County for the past ten years, and I am also a native Washingtonian. I am here to just address the city council government responsiveness and also community engagement. On November the tenth, honor about November the tenth, I submitted a formal proposal via email to the City of Bowie requesting to reserve the Ken Hill Community Center for a community event entitled Neighbor to Neighbor. I provided copies to the city clerk just before this meeting. This event is intended to bring neighbors together to donate gently-used or new household items, food for a food pantry, and sports equipment for upcoming winter and spring seasons for school's sports. In my proposal, I outlined my communications plan, which included promotion through social media, a virtual information meeting for interested donors, and an RSVP registration link via Google Forms. This process would allow us to monitor participation and control capacity and compliance with the community center's one hundred person limit. Unfortunately, as of date, I have not received a response. I sent a follow-up email during the week of November twenty-second requesting an update and was told I would hear back soon graciously, yet no communication has been received. This delay is particularly troubling, given the current economic challenges facing our community, especially the many government employees impacted since February twenty twenty-five and more recently by the federal government shutdown, as I am a current federal employee. The purpose of this event is simple: to allow neighbors to support one another during difficult times. For example, I personally own a brand-new, unused smoker that I would gladly give to a neighbor in need while I myself am in need of bookshelves. This is about community care, mutual support, and shared resources. And most recently, as of today, on the Facebook page entitled Bowie Giveaway, which we host free items, an individual wanted to donate some household items, and there were only two individual identified companies. One was Sacred Heart Ministries, and they said they already received so many donations. When I responded and said that I put this proposal and send it to the city government, I received approximately seven responses from other individuals who are willing to participate, and they even suggested doing a prom dress event in the next coming year to help those who may need assistance with prom dresses. I am deeply disappointed by the lack of communication regarding what should be a straightforward reservation request. As I stated, as a native Washingtonian, I have been able to make a reservation with the community center within a week, just to schedule a baby shower. I have never experienced this level of delay. I have received no consistent communication additionally in my ten years as a city resident from my city council representative, no newsletters, no community updates, and no engagement opportunities. Our community is facing serious challenges. For example, following the tragic murder of Mr. Cara Thompson, which occurred in the case section in the Ken Hill area around the corner of my home, not a single representative from our section publicly addressed the community, held a meeting, or issued a statement. Meanwhile, the governor of Maryland, county officials, and law enforcement leadership were visibly present and engaged. This raises serious concerns about the responsiveness, accountability, and leadership within the city. With election season approaching, it is critical that we have leaders who understand real hardship and are willing to take action, not simply occupy a seat. People in this community are hurting, and they need visible leadership, communication, and solutions, not silence. I respectfully request clarification on the status of my reservation request and a response regarding the city's approach to community engagement. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Terry Rogers, and I'm here on behalf of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. And I have with me Mr. Robert Day. He's also one of our board members. At this point in time, would it be out of order if I asked that our Mr. Lot come forward?
I was just about to send a text to the council. I'll ask the community to reach contact Mr. Rogers and fight for that request.
So, so, good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, citizens of this great city of Bowie. It's always a pleasure to stand before you, but my reason for my presence this evening brings me even greater satisfaction. On behalf of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce, our secretary and myself, acting secretary, are here to present a proclamation to our retiring city manager. So, our proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce recognizes and celebrates individuals whose leadership, integrity, and public service have significantly advanced the well-being and prosperity of our city. And whereas Alfred D. Lot has faithfully served as the city manager of Bowie, Maryland, demonstrating exceptional professionalism in municipal governance, strong administrative leadership, and a steadfast commitment to public service. And whereas during his distinguished tenure, Mr. Lot oversaw transformative efforts that strengthened operational infrastructure, advanced public services, and ensured the long-term sustainability of municipal programs, benefiting residents and the business community alike. And whereas Mr. Lot has consistently championed collaboration with civic leaders, nonprofit partners, and business and the business community, fostering an environment that supports economic development, business growth, and commercial investment through the City of Bowie. And whereas his steady leadership, sound judgment, and ability to navigate complex municipal challenges have contributed greatly to the stability, growth, and desirability of Bowie as a place to live, work, and conduct business. Whereas he concludes his years of dedicated service and enters a well-earned retirement, it is both fitting and proper that the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce recognize and honor his extraordinary contributions and enduring legacy. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce hereby honors and commends Alfred D. Lot for his distinguished leadership, public service, and lasting impact on the City of Bowie. Be it further proclaimed that the Chamber extends its deepest appreciation and warmest wishes for continued fulfillment, health, and success in all future endeavors. Presented this first day of December twenty twenty-five, Terry Rogers, Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce President, and standing in behalf of Kenneth Dalton, our secretary, is Mr. Robert
I got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. And today, I knew this guy in College Park, you know.
Twenty-five plus.
Yeah, he used to be a council member there. Well, I'm humbled, and I'm very appreciative. The Bowie Chamber of Commerce is a essential entity for the maintenance and growth of our community, and we should do all that we can to foster that. And I'm a big supporter, and I'm humbled, and yes, I'm ready to retire, and hope that wish of health keeps up because I'm kind of old, too. But thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, public. I come before you. My name is Stephen Carpenter. I am with the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. I'm also on the Board of FSC First, and I'm also the Business Development Manager of Prince George's Community Federal Credit Union. We wanted to wish you all a happy holidays, and just thank you for the commitment that the city has had for the Chamber and for the outreach that we're able to help businesses in the Greater Bowie area, to help them be successful. Because at the end of the day, if we make people successful, our community is going to be successful. And how do we do that? We work with partners like FSC First, with Maryland Women in Business, with Mr. King, with the Bowie Economic Development Committee. And I really just wanted to take time on behalf of the Chamber to say thank you, and invite everybody to our networking party December tenth from six to eight P. M. at the Shantu Restaurant, which is the old Pizza Hut on Pointer Ridge, for some networking and celebrate the holiday season. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your support.
At this time, we will move on to presentations. And the Old Town Bowie Arts and Heritage Committee, members of the committee, will present certificates to the 2025 Old Town Bowie Celebrates Festival volunteers. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, council members. First of all, let us thank you for allowing us the opportunity to stand before you and honor the people who volunteered for the Old Bowie Celebrates Festival this year. As you know, we had over five thousand people attend the festival this year, and it could not have happened or been as successful without our group of volunteers and committee members. May I ask the committee members to please stand here? We'll try to be expedient, Mayor.
No problem.
So, we're going to start off. First of all, we wanted to honor one of our members who was pretty much the backbone of the committee. She was our leader. She was our mentor. She was our guide. So, if Ms. Verna Teasdale would please come forward. This certificate is presented to you, Verna, for your leadership and years of tireless dedication to the Old Bowie Arts and Heritage Steering Committee. We thank you for your unwavering commitment and strengthening our community. Okay. And so, with our certificates, I'll try to make this quickly. On our certificates, we honor our volunteers by saying, "Volunteers do not necessarily have the time. They have the heart to volunteer to make their community a greater place." For this, John Teasdale,
All right.
And we've been working with the students and the younger committee, community, to get them involved, to bring something back. But we figure we have to start teaching them how to give in order to receive. Lincoln Jefferson.
He's the youngest. Kathy Dent.
The students you were talking about.
And Dr. Latoya Phillips. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. We look forward to it. For our volunteers, we could not have done it without you. And for all who are sitting in this room, the festival is every first Saturday in October. So, if you have not done it yet, please look out for us and sign up to volunteer. It means a lot to the community. It inspires the children, and it gets our seniors and our families together for one day of celebration, celebrating life, celebrating each other. Last word, there's a mini-reception going on upstairs. There's lots of food up there, so after the meeting or during your break, please go upstairs and partake in the snacks that we have up there. And I want to say, Mayor, thank you for signing all of those certificates. And Welda, thank you so very much. I harassed her to death trying to get these done. And to the council, thank you all so very much for the opportunity. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever your belief. May God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anything for city boards and committees. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. We will now go to council announcements. And if I may, I'd like to ask everyone just to take a moment, for a moment of silence. I'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the family of the fallen service member. We'd like to say thank you for their dedication and for their service. But I'd also like to make sure that we keep in mind all of those who have suffered through violence this year, and all those families who have lost dear ones. So, if we could, again, just take one moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. Council members, any announcements? Councilmember of staff?
Just wanted to add my sentiments of thank you. I know some folks went back upstairs to the volunteer group that helped put on the Old Bowie Festival this year and for the past several years. This used to be a labor of love run by some of the old business community in decades past. And then, as folks moved on and or passed on, there was a small group of volunteers who met at Old Town Grill who said, "You know, we should get that old thing going again." And that group has grown tremendously. I think the first year, we had maybe four or five people on the planning committee, and clearly, it's grown to a lot more than that. And I'm just very grateful to the many folks who helped put that on, also deeply grateful to city staff, who I promised the first year that we asked you guys to help pay for this thing, that we wouldn't do that on a rolling basis, but we continue to do it on a rolling basis. And not only that, but over time, we have grown the cadre of staff who help participate from our public safety to our parks and public works and other departments, who have put on a safe and fun festival every year. And so, I'm also very grateful to you and to your teams for your participation that helps make this event successful. And a big thank in particular to Dr. Latoya, and John, and Verna, and Celia, and Karen, and there's a lot more names on here than I meant to read. But to all of you, thank you, and appreciate the good work.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Councilmember DeFoue.
Thank you. A couple, just a couple of quick things. The first is, this coming Saturday, we'll have the tree lighting ceremony at the senior center. So, look forward to seeing everybody out there. Typically, we have a couple of food trucks. It's a good time for all ages. Santa will undoubtedly make an appearance as his usual practice and schedule permits. So, we're very fortunate to have him visit. So, bring out, bring out the little ones as well. Also, just as FYI, our council member Brady is unavailable this evening because he is sick. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Emdebe Madu?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And City Hall, thank you for attending our council hearing, and congratulations to all the honorees. And wonderful evening to the beautiful residents of District Four. A couple of things that I'm going to call out, and this is really more for staff's note. I received a couple of emails over the weekend from some constituents in District Four highlighting the following areas. If staff could have our code enforcement, just take a look at these areas. Some of them might just be road, more for public works, and some areas are for our code enforcement. The parking lot of Jerry's Seafood has a pretty big pothole in it that's creating a lot of disruption when people are parking. So, I think there was an accident where somebody kind of tripped up over that big dent that's in that structure over there. The parking lot of Walmart now has a bunch of trailers that are now parked there. I think Walmart owns that property, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't know if there's anything in our code around large amounts of trailers being parked in a visible vicinity, but it is kind of degradating the area and creating a little bit of eyesore for District Four residents. The parking lot on CVS on Crane Highway has a lot of trash and debris outside of it. So, if we can contact CVS and ask them to clean that up, that would be great. And then, the parking lot of Coles in District Three has a lot of trash on the ground closer towards the back near the office space. So, we can have staff just take a look at that on behalf of District Four. That would be amazing. The second part is, if staff can give us an update by email, that would be amazing. On November sixth, I sent an email to staff about economic development presentation coming before the city as we had our legislative meeting with our state delegates and state senator regarding economic development and their strategy going into the session in 2026. Unfortunately, I made a request, which was not granted, as I see, because it's not on tonight's hearing, but for staff to prepare a presentation, specifically feasibility for a presentation summarizing consolidated priorities, estimated costs, potential funding mechanisms of a potential EDC stemming from the review of the Jacob Francis Institute and Margrave Strategies 2022 Economic Development Study that the city had done in 2022. That briefing unfortunately did not come before us this evening, which pushes our timeline to January. So, I am going to urge staff to make sure that that is on the January agenda, because it is not on a tentative schedule right now, and so that we can get back to our state delegates and have a sound economic development strategy going into the 2026 budget cycle for the state of Maryland. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the last thing I will say is, on behalf of District Four, to District Four, and to all of you here, happy holidays, and I hope you enjoy it with your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If you'd like to, please go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays as well. This is during the season of giving and holidays. Tomorrow is Giving Tuesday for the nation, where nonprofits are asking that folks give. And I will put in a pitch for the Bowie Interfaith Food Pantry, which said that they really received a lot of food and nonperishable and money during the Thanksgiving season. They do have shortages around Spam and peanut butter and canned soup. But one of the things that was shared with me last week was that they do not get many donations during January and February. So, I just ask that people remember during Giving Tuesday to give, but also remember that the need is daily. It's not seasonal. So, please remember, when you do your Valentine's Day, giving out your hearts, open up your heart to give to the Interfaith Food Pantry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the city managers' report?
Good evening, Miss Mayor and City Council and residents out in Bowie. With regard to the EDC assignment, we have two parallel assignments going on. There was an assignment from Mr. Brady and that you all voted on a couple of months ago, and where we're working to bring something in March or so. But we, we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves. So, we're, I got Mr. King out trying to get us a consultant to help. The assignment that the request from Ms. Emdebe Madu in District Four was not a consensus item, but we are working on that. We're trying to incorporate that into the assignment we want to give the consultant. Once we find one that we can assign to help us look at all the, all the factors associated with establishing an EDC as soon as possible. But that's in the works. Thank you. And oh, by the way, with regard to the nine years that I've been here, the thing that I am most proud of are the leaders that I have hired to help run the city. All our department directors, our senior staff, I can't take credit for Mr. King. He was here when I got here. No Byron. However, I can take credit for Nick Spurgeon, Duane Preston, Mr. Hall, and Dr. On in Public Works, Lola in Finance, who is preparing to take over when Byron leaves. These are all strong-willed, standalone leaders who can take charge anytime and keep Bowie moving forward without any issues. That's what I'm proud of, and they're not necessarily my image, but I, but they're my kind of directors, and senior staff. And of course, our new communications director, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to say something? I'll give you the privilege. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to add a little context around the economic development ask. Just so District Four is on the same page, and we are just all on the same page. We had a directive that was given to, that was given to staff in October, in the October meeting, and we all voted on that. And that directive was brought up by Councilmember Brady. After the directive was given, I sent an email to city staff on November 6th. And basically, what that email reads and states is, following last night's session, Directive on Economic Development, I wanted to bring structure to the next step and create alignment around a shared strategy moving into the new year. I'm not sure I understand, or my takeaway from that directive from the October meeting was that we are going to hire outside consultants because this is a study that we already had done. What Councilmember Brady's initiative was, was to add structure around the 2022 Economic Development Study that the city already had done by the Jacob Francis Institute and Margrave Strategies in 2022. There were concrete recommendations given to the city of Bowie in four concrete areas. Creative placemaking, leveraging Bowie State University as an anchor institution, positioning Bowie as an athletic and recreation tourism hub. Number four is expanding and diversifying Bowie's business base. Because we already had those themes, what I asked staff to do to create structure around the directive that they were already given was for us to understand, based on the recommendations that the study has already laid out for the city, for us to provide structure around how much that would cost us to implement those recommendations, summarize the consolidated points so that we understand what recommendations we can take as an, for action as a city council, and then what those potential funding mechanisms could be. The reason why that was expedited is because our state delegation said to us verbatim, we need an economic development strategy from the city of Bowie by January to advocate for monies to be allocated for the city of Bowie during the next session. That was what the clarity was. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and there's clarity around that. We already have recommendations. My ask was to consolidate and basically understand how much those recommendations would cost and what potential funding mechanisms were out there. So it's not something where it's another outside expertise. It's from industry knowledge of being in economic development, how much would that cost us? And give us something light to work with so that we could at least have something to present to our delegation before January. We are now behind, and we don't have the ability to wait till March because then the funding session for the state of Maryland would have came and gone, and we'd be looking at a turnaround of 2027 to be asking for economic development monies for the city of Bowie, which I find unacceptable on behalf of District Four residents. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and there's clarity around my ask. It was not a new directive. It was creating structure around the directive that was already given and the consensus that we already made. If we need to have, if I need to add that on agenda so we can all vote on it and have consensus so staff has clarity, we can do that tonight. I'm happy to do that. But I don't think there's any further consensus that's needed around the structure of how much does it cost us to implement the things that we've been recommended? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think that's enough clarity for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, we will, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Councilmember? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. At this time, we will conduct old business. Adoption of Ordinance 013-25, amended the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. As embodied in Ordinance 0425 and amended by Ordinance 01125 to appropriate funds for the following projects. $500,000 for lighting repairs, $200,000 for lateral sewer lining project at Somerset, $16,500 for salary and fringe benefits, $10,000 for a housing grant, $15,200 for a folder sealer machine, and $16,800 for the building permit issuance for the Bowie Golf Course Maintenance Building. Behalf city staff, is there any comments you'd like to make?
No, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty cut and dry as far as what we need. We're just, we're just doing, this is just a, as we go along, we are, this is an administrative action to catch up with what our spending is so far this year. So if we could get this approved, we'll, we'd appreciate it. But these are all items in the budget that you all approved and directed us to accomplish.
Thank you, city manager. At this time, I will declare a public hearing open.
Mayor, there's no one signed up for this evening, and no comments were received via email.
Thank you. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is eligible for action?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Ordinance 0-13-25.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, COG. Executive Director Clark Mercer will be giving a presentation regarding the history of COG and different programs that the local governments have participated in with COG. And how are you doing today?
Doing well, Mayor. Thank you for having me. And I won't trespass on too much of your time with the reception of food waiting. I'm the executive director at the Council of Governments. I'm coming up on year three in January of being at the Council of Mayor Adams as one of our board members and grateful to be here tonight. I want to thank Kayla Joyner from our Government Affairs and Membership Outreach Team for helping me put this presentation together. So a good question that lots of folks have is, what is the Council of Governments? And what does it do? And so I do this presentation to our 24 members in and around the district. So we represent and work with 24 local governments. In Northern Virginia, it's down to Prince William and Loudoun County; in Maryland, Montgomery, Prince George's, Charles, and Frederick County. Represent about 6 million folks. If we were, if that footprint were its own state, it would be the sixth largest, sixth largest metro area in the country. It would be the most diverse state in the country, the most well-educated, and 14th in the country for GDP. And you see there, we're about 70 years old. So about 70 years ago, local elected officials in the region came together and realized there are a number of issues they were working on that did not exist in a vacuum. Transportation planning, public safety, housing, the unhoused, economic development, clean air, clean water, issues that don't obey a boundary on a map. So in any given month, we bring in about 1,500 local staff around the region. So thank your city managers. Every month, a CAO meeting, fire chief meeting, police chief meeting, chief diversity officer, transportation planners. We bring the region together to learn and adopt as practices. We are home to the region's Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, which is called the Transportation Planning Board. So the federal government mandates if you have over 50,000 folks in a region, you have a Transportation Planning Board. They will not put a dime on a road project or transit project unless it sits in MPO's long-term plan. So there's hundreds of MPOs across the country. This is kind of Switzerland. When a jurisdiction in this region has a transportation idea, it requires votes from Maryland, Virginia, and the district to pass. So very notably, a couple of weeks ago, there was a project offered by the Commonwealth of Virginia to extend managed lanes across the Wilson Bridge into Prince George's County that came before the Transportation Planning Board and was not included in the Transportation Planning Board's long-term plan. But out of our 130 staff that we have, about half of our staff are transportation planners and engineers. And so this kind of sums up why folks come together in the region. We're better connected, we're safer, we're more thriving from an economic development perspective, and we're healthier. So I mentioned much of this in the transportation planning space already. But visualize 2050 is the long-term plan. We've been accepting public input, and the plan, the final approver, approval is on December 19th. You see there, the Street Smart campaign. We run a public awareness campaign every year for more safe roads for pedestrians and cyclists. Last year, 117 folks in this region were killed, either walking or riding their bicycles. So not injured, but killed, unfortunately. commuter connections helps large organizations, large federal agencies plan commuting patterns home. Van pool, car pools, that sort of thing. 170 residents in Bowie actively use the commuter connections program. Up there, we give out technical assistance and grants for different transportation planning. That's one that we recently awarded to the city of Bowie for an ADA crosswalk. And we run the Bike to Work Day each day, which you have a bike to work stop here at City Hall. Real quick, for the past 18 months, we've been working with every transit agency in the region to look at kind of long-term funding needs for transit writ large across the region. A big piece of that's Metro, but also VRi, Mark, all the local bus providers. That group included the chambers of commerce from the region. B.M.D. included your environmental groups, your labor groups, all coming together to discuss different funding needs. And that work wrapped a couple of weeks ago. We're now in the process of talking to delegates and senators from Annapolis and Richmond and the D.C. City Council on what those funding needs are. Happy to go in more, more detail there. But heavy emphasis on passenger rail, and obviously, Mark has a heavy presence here in Bowie. So for Homeland Security and Public Safety, we run 28 different public safety programs on behalf of the region. The mutual aid agreement is probably the most visible. That allows a public safety officer in the city of Bowie to respond across jurisdictional boundaries. That photo on the slide deck there were representatives from 90 different agencies that responded to the midair collision of the Potomac River in January. The mutual aid agreement is almost always in effect in the D.C. region, 4th of July, the Marine Corps Marathon, Squared into the President. Very visibly, January 6th, a few years ago, the Virginia State Troopers, when they crossed the bridge to respond to the Capitol, they did so through the mutual aid agreement. The crime dashboard that I note up there, we launched that, oh, about four months ago. And that is the first of its kind in the country. It pulls real-time data from 24 jurisdictions on seven or eight major categories of crime to give a real-time assessment for what's going on in the region so policymakers can respond. We do a lot of tabletop exercises across the region with public safety officers. Have a pretty heavy planning services department that forecasts growth, so job growth and population growth. So the region is expected to grow by about 1.4 million people between now and 2050, and add about a million jobs. On economic development, just a few weeks ago, we partnered and underwrote a joint program with the Urban Land Institute to look at revitalization of Bowie Town Center. I'll note on this, and it was mentioned earlier in terms of an EDA, about 85% of the country sits on what's designated as an Economic Development District by the Department of Commerce. And if you look at the map of the country, it's like Los Angeles, the state of Wyoming, and the DMV that are not designated as an Economic Development District. So this is one of the first issues I started tackling when I came on board a couple of years ago, is answering the question as to why. And it's because of the tri-state nature of this region. But it's the jurisdictions coming together and identifying what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our opportunities? And that federal designation helps pull in federal money when you go after different types of projects. So that is something we're working on with the EDA directors across the region and hope to put what the call is said, the comprehensive economic development strategy together over the next year or two, and then apply on behalf of the region to be an Economic Development District. Housing, we do a lot of work in housing, kind of articulating. I mean, bury the lead upfront. We don't have enough affordable housing in this region. We don't have enough housing, period. But we work with jurisdictions on what those numbers look like and strategies to build more affordable housing. We've been recipients for five years now of the Amazon Housing Equity Fund, which we distribute throughout the region on a competitive process. And we run the point-in-time count for the region. That's the annual count of individuals experiencing homelessness. Clean air, clean water, pretty self-explanatory that those are issues that don't obey boundaries on a map. We do a lot in the clean water department. The Anacostia River Project has been a project of COG for over 40 years, working with Maryland and the District of Columbia to clean up the Anacostia. But there's a long list there of lots of different issues we work on. The Potomac River provides 100% of drinking water to the district and to different jurisdictions in this region. We don't have a secondary water source for the Potomac River. So that's a good example of a project that we're working on with the Army Corps of Engineers to try and articulate what a secondary water source could be like for this region. Few other quick items, and then I promise you, I will wrap up. We have a joint procurement program through COG. Always encourage our jurisdictions to take more advantage of this. City Bowie buys a lot of the same stuff that the other jurisdictions in this region buy. And if you partner with the Montgommerys and Prince George's and Fairfax's, you can lower the cost of what you're purchasing. Those are some examples of items that the city of Bowie uses through our procurement program to purchase. So gasoline, diesel fuel, rock salt. I will say that there's some Homeland Security equipment that gets pretty expensive that we procure on behalf of the region. Motorola radios for police, and the savings can get pretty significant. We push out a lot of data. So if you need information on what's going on in this region, I encourage you to come to WMCOG.org. We have daily news clips that go out about 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock every morning, sampling of news from around the DMV. And our economic indicators is called our RIMS, our Regional Economic Monitoring Service. So that's everything from inflation to unemployment rate to office occupancy to housing new starts, broken down by jurisdiction. This right here is TalentCapital.ai that was launched about two months ago. We had the Secretary of Labor for Maryland, Secretary of Labor from Virginia, Mayor Bowser announced this. This is really a response to what's happening at the federal level with downsizing. And this kind of captures all of the various initiatives across the region, all 24 jurisdictions doing 24 different things to try to keep good, smart people here in this region. It's got the most comprehensive job board of any of the job boards that are out there. Uses iterative AI, so you submit your resume, and it matches you with a job in the region. We have a commitment from the employers on that job board to give a real honest look to the federal employees and contractors that are matched. I'll note that there's 1,100 active users in the county. Bowie is one of the top cities where folks have been using TalentCapital.ai. And the top three searches from Bowie residents are project management, marketing, communications, and IT. Bowie has 5,400 federal workers. That's almost 22% of the workforce here in the city of Bowie. That's not counting contractors. And when you add that in, that gets over, probably over 40% of the workforce in the city of Bowie. The median federal income is $129,000 for a federal employee in the city of Bowie. So if you go to our website, we break down by jurisdiction, by delegate district, by senate district, by congressional district, the number of federal employees, by census tract, and the average amount that they earn. I will say that last slide New York wants you, there's about 15 states right now that are aggressively marketing into our region. They know that we're a talented region, and they want to recruit folks to move out. And that is kind of an existential threat. So this whole partnership here in the We the People campaign was the headline that grabbed you and directed you to TalentCapital.ai. That is a partnership with the Board of Trade and with the Greater Washington Partnership. Gone over the workforce data. I mentioned that we have the economic trends dashboard. And then the DMV monitor is a partnership between COG and Brookings Institute. Brookings does a good job of taking our raw data and telling a story in terms of what's happening. So I encourage you to look at the DMV monitor, but it really breaks down things like the unemployment rate, the amount of venture capital flow that's coming into the region, the number of homes that are for sale. Year over year, we're up 64% in terms of the number of homes that are listed for sale right now. And you know what? I'll wrap it up there. I've used all my allotted time, I think. But we are grateful that the city of Bowie is a member of the Council of Governments. We have lots of committees to serve on. So if you're interested in any of the topics that I covered tonight, we'd be more than happy to chat with you about opportunities. So thank you. Happy to take any questions if you have.
First and foremost, thank you so very much. Having worked with COG and being a part of it, there's so much information that is there. I was really impressed with the meeting we recently had, I want to say with the Metro Board and COG, as we talked about how we might move forward. I will have to say that I was extremely impressed with the emphasis that was put on local buses as well. You know, sometimes we get caught up in the metro and all of that. You know, sometimes we get caught up in the metro and all of that. I was glad to see that included in that framework was, and it was brought out in the meeting about local bus service and being able to design those things and get it to where those people who don't really live on the metro line will still be able to have adequate and dependable transportation. So again, kudos on that project that they've been working on and also just with COG as a whole. Any questions, anyone? Councilwoman M. Dibemadu?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for your presentation. Really, really love the work that you do at COG. And I am a member of the Health and Human Services Committee, so I've really enjoyed the work, and just to see all of the co-collaborators across the region has been really impressive. The one ask that I would have for you as you continue to go forward is to help us continue to understand how we can highlight and emphasize our story as it pertains to all the movement that's going on in the district. As, you know, one of the largest neighboring cities to the district, we have a lot of constituents who work in the District of Columbia who leave the city of Bowie to go to D C. And so having a broader intentional integration with D C and being able to kind of co-collaborate with some of the movements that they have from an economic development capacity and workforce development, that would be really, really, really insightful and helpful for us here in the city. So I'd love to kind of lean on your perspective a little bit more there and what you're seeing that's scaling in the district as well as at Virginia. And then also, I just want to thank our mayor, who is also a member of the Board of Directors of COG. So thank you for being plugged in and continuing to make sure that we're top of mind here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd say it's probably, so previous to serving at COG, I was the Governor's Chief of Staff in Virginia for eight years. And I kind of wish I knew then what I know now. It's very much a zero-sum game, economic development. And this region operates much more as a region, and it's much more relevant to align skills and jobs of a student in Bowie and a student in Alexandria than it is a student in Alexandria and a student in Big Stone Gap fifteen hours away. But that's not the way in Annapolis or Richmond we view the region. And when companies are looking to locate in Bowie, they take a pencil and they will draw out concentric circles, ten, twenty, thirty, forty minutes, and say, is there affordable housing? Can people get around the region? Do they sit in traffic all day? Do they have the workforce? And you see ads for Atlanta, the Atlanta region, Houston Galveston, the Research Triangle. I turn on the Jim TV and I see one for Alexandria, one for Montgomery County, one for D C. We don't sell the region as a region. And so I think what's happening with the federal workforce is making folks realize that in suburban Maryland, two hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand Marylanders going to D C and Virginia every day, two hundred thousand Virginians going to D C for work every day. We live and work across those boundaries. So that Economic Development District will be an attempt to bring the region together and articulate here as an economic development plan for the region, and we should sell, we should be able to turn on the TV and see an ad selling the National Capital Region.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I would like to acknowledge again your
Yes, please.
Associate who is here. If you could just
Kayla, come on up. And she's always staffed. She, this is not the first time I have to say hello to her aunt again. They're here, they're staffing here at the meeting, which is nice.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I enjoy working with you and your assistant Sharon all the time, so I appreciate your kindness to me all the time, so thank you so much.
No, and thank you for all that you do, because you just make him look good, that's all. No, I'm just kidding. No, but thank you so, I just wanted to acknowledge you because you do so much as well. And personally, for myself, I really appreciate all that you've done in assisting me through the process, okay?
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. All right. Have a good evening. At this time, we will work on the item B, Adoption of Resolution R dash one-one-four dash twenty-five, Adopting an Environmental Action Plan for the City. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And we're here tonight to seek adoption of the Environmental Action Plan by resolution. And I have with me Cisco Tomcino from Blue Strike Environmental that worked with us on developing the plan from the beginning. And also have behind me, I believe, yes, so we have Lexi Willem, you know her, she's our sustainability planner. She worked on this as well. And we also have, her first day, we have Sasha Land, and she's our new sustainability manager. So this is actually really her first day. So she's taking lots of notes, and a great treat to have a city council meeting at her first day. And not every day she'll work until nine or ten o'clock at night, but we'll see. The other thing I just want to mention, given the previous agenda item, is to thank Wash Cog for their help in general, and certainly planning directors go to meetings, as you all well know, and that's a great source of information exchange. And sometimes they bring us together with housing directors jointly, and those have been good sessions. But the other thing is, and I know it was mentioned, that they encouraged us and helped with the TAP, the Bowie Town Center TAP that we just had, and that event in these chambers about two weeks ago. And I know five of the council members came to that, so that was great. So moving on to the Environmental Action Plan, again, as you all know, we started around April, and the goal there is to build on sustainability, climate change policies, actions, and outreach that the city has been doing for quite some time. In a nutshell, what we're doing is essentially updating and combining the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Plan and getting input to do that and working with sister agencies and other partners to come up with the best path, best menu of options going forward. So Cisco is going to go over that in just a minute. Couple of things I just wanted to highlight from it is that we did significant public engagement. We started out with a survey. This was in May, had about one hundred and seventy responses, is very positive in moving forward with a plan, developing a plan. We had public engagement session, and I believe it was in May, we had at the Ken Hill Center. We also had direct meetings with our green team and with our Environmental Advisory Committee. And our fearless chairman is here tonight, as you know, John Faisel is here. And so we worked with him and many others on this. We also had a public review comment period in October, in the middle of October, for a couple of weeks. In the middle of that, we had a webinar for people to provide their comments. And so with that, no further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Cisco, and he has a presentation he's going to walk us through, and he will certainly be happy to take comments and questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. It's been an honor to work with the city of Bowie and its staff over the last several months, and we're excited to present some of the progress that we've made putting together this Environmental Action Plan for the city. Tonight, we're going to start with the need for the plan, sort of some of the steps that we took to develop the plan, a little bit of an overview of the plan, and then talk through some of the implementation and anticipated results stemming from that plan. So to start with the need for a plan, we ultimately wanted to chart a path for, to advance sustainability within the city. We wanted to give residents an opportunity to sort of shape and give their input into how the city should continue to develop with sustainability in mind, and wanted to make sure that the city continued to grow, I'm sorry, grow but linking and continuing with sustainability with that growth. We wanted a chance to, as Rich mentioned, sort of revisit the past sort of momentum that's already been made in existing climate action and sustainability plans, making sure that we're uplifting the progress that's already been made there and continuing to build on what's been done there. And then finally, we wanted to align with the recent action by the state of Maryland through the Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022, which notably outlines the need to achieve a net-zero goal in greenhouse gas emission reductions by 2045. So to start with plan development, we ultimately started with reviewing data and getting some background. Starting with background, we reviewed any sort of relevant city plans and county plans, making sure that we're, again, uplifting some of the progress that's already been made here and aligning with Prince George's County to ensure that we're all working in the same direction and sort of building with each other in mind. We also reviewed data from COG that sort of outlined the greenhouse gas emissions, which really helps us make data-driven decisions around where we can have the most impactful work in terms of emission reductions, despite the fact that that's only one part of the Greater Environmental Action Plan. And then, of course, as a consultancy, we bring experience from all over the country and learn to make sure that we are bringing any sort of ideas, strategies that we've seen elsewhere, not just in Prince George's County or in the area, and bring those to play here to make sure that this is a well-rounded plan. As Rich mentioned, we also hosted a number of engagement events, starting with the public survey. We also hosted a community engagement event back in May, inviting all to come out and sort of give some input as we were starting to shape these strategies within the plan. We presented and discussed with the Environmental Advisory Committee as well as the green team, giving them an opportunity to give some input and ask questions about the direction that we're heading with the plan. And then we've also circulated a draft of the plan with city staff, as well as offering the public an opportunity to comment and sort of review the contents of the plan. So with all that engagement from the public, with sort of the background that we collected through data and existing plans, we charted a vision for the plan to create a more sustainable and more resilient community. We wanted to also increase and improve the natural habitats that already existed here and continue to increase tree canopy where possible. We also wanted to make sure that sustainability was integrated both into the city's daily operations as well as the long-term planning. And finally, aligned with the state of Maryland and its goal, continue to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and ultimately chart a path toward achieving net zero in 2045 or flat So with all that in mind, we developed a framework that breaks out all the strategies of the plan and really the recommendations of the plan into five key categories. Those categories are energy efficiency and renewables, transportation and mobility, waste management, stormwater management and green infrastructure, and then green spaces and natural resources. So those five buckets host all of our sixteen goals, thirty-one strategies, and eighty-eight actions that are included in the plan. And just below each of those sort of blue, that blue top line, you see a few just sample topics that are included within each. To give you a little bit more of an example of what's included in the plan, we really wanted to highlight the breadth and extent of these strategies within the plan and show that it goes everywhere from increasing the share of E Vs in the city's fleet to developing a watershed strategy, creating and improving pollinator gardens, and also making sustainable development a core part of the city's approach as well as its economic sustainability. So in the bottom here, as you'll see, we just have an example of how our goals, strategies, and actions work together, where we have these really big-picture goals that are supported by strategies, and those actions serve as a checklist for city staff to be able to implement and execute those strategies. So implementation will have to be as diverse and as flexible as the recommendations within the plan. I mentioned that there's a pretty wide scope and breadth of actions within the plan, so it'll continue to need to be flexible. The plan will call on the city to be, to lead by example, both in its facilities, but also work with residences and businesses as well as partnering with the county and the state. Many of these actions will require funding. Some of that will require the city to budget accordingly in its long-term planning, but also implementation is built in such that we have a sort of structured flexibility built in so that city staff can act opportunistically when funds are available. And then finally, while this plan, ten-year plan outlines a range of recommendations, an annual action item, an annual action agenda is going to be needed to ultimately prioritize which items are executed in each year, and the progress that is made will be shared through the State of the Environment in an annual report. And then I did want to share just some of the forecasting that we did in terms of greenhouse gas reductions, because through the public comment period, this is something that we received, just a couple of comments on. You'll see in the green shaded sort of cone, this outlines the range of possibilities that comes in terms of emission reductions from adopting the plan, and in the dark line below it, you'll see the net-zero goal. And really, hopefully, what I hope you notice is the gap between the two. And I just want to call out that this is something that we are forecasting based on the solutions that are currently available today and available at scale. So in line with the state of Maryland, there is a gap there, a known gap, and that gap is expected. It's common when consultants and really states, counties are doing this forecasting, because that is the gap that should be answered by new developments in technology, scaling of existing technology, and really the advanced call for removals in sort of the system of reducing emissions. So with all that, I know that was a very brief and quick overview of the plan. I'd like to open it up to any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay. This time, I will declare public hearing open.
Mayor, we don't have anyone signed up and no comments were received.
Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, questions? Any questions? Please, Councilwoman Rogers?
So the one thing that kind of comes to my mind, just with your presentation, is that on the federal level, it seems as if all the rules have sort of changed. And when we look at the state planning, particularly since last council or last one before we talked about B P s, I become kind of concerned as to whether or not we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, because the state has such an aggressive program, and the federal level has decided, well, there's not a problem. And we get down to the municipal level, and we're trying to do the right things, because this is where the rubber hits the road, and this is where people really feel the impact of what's going on in the environment. So is there any gap analysis? Is there anything that you can share with us that help us kind of bridge those, you know, cones of darkness here?
Yes, I'll start with, I guess, the timing of implementation, because had we done this a year ago, implementation would look very different. The resources that were out there federally, you know, we said, let's get on these right away. There's opportunities for the city to save a significant amount of money. That no longer exists at the federal level for a lot of these programs. So with that, we have actually scaled back some of the rigidity in implementation in terms of the timeline to allow for some flexibility to be able to act on some of the programs that we might be able to afford now. We've also done some analysis that's been provided to staff that simply shows sort of prioritization of actions and items that should be handled first, if possible. So with that, it's simply providing some sort of prioritization, but also some flexibility to account for the fact that these things are changing, and it seems to change with, at the federal level with different administrations now, but maybe there's some things that can get knocked out where there's state funding, where there's funding or alignment that's available through the county, and some of those larger programs that might, that could be available federally, perhaps that's something that becomes available in a few years down the road.
Thank you. So appreciate the question, Councilwoman. I would just add, Cisco covered it pretty well. We, in the plan, accounted for flexibility. We have the targets in there, as you saw in that last graphic that Cisco showed. So we have a North Star to march towards, and there's more to the plan than just the greenhouse gas reductions, but that's a big one that's very quantified and obviously quantified statewide. I think everyone working on this knows, we need to make progress, right? We need to continue the progress we've been making and make more. We did not box ourselves in a corner for exactly, you know, certain budget amounts and that kind of thing. So it sets up a structure for us. It's not a wish, I think it's not a wish list, what's in there, the recommendations, but also it's more than a wish list, it's more realistic than a wish list. It's a bit of a menu that works to take us towards a target, but it enables us to understand, like Cisco said, what funding's available, be it from the federal government, from the state, what we're able to fund on our own here with our own budget here in the city, and this is where the rubber meets the road, we're at ground zero with this. And, you know, we had some of these conversations with sister agencies. So everyone's aware that we have where we like to go, what our goal is, and what are the practices that we are prioritizing. So then we need to work with council on our budget and work with other partners, be it the state, county, other it the state, county, others, federal government, to help us get there, and private sector as well.
Thank you. Good answers. Thank you both very much. Thank you.
I'd like to kind of comment, and I like to try and make things a little simplistic, so bear with me. As I listen to you, I think what we get from this plan is direction. We have a direction, we have some actionable items we can do, those things that we can do. I think, but for us to get to that 2045 zero emissions, we're going to have to spend money. It's going to cost. But also, we have to count on innovation as well. So having said that, I think you did a good job of presenting, and I appreciate that, a direction for us, because that's what we need, is direction. We see things that are listed there that we can do, that it may require funding and other things, and we know we still have to hope that we do better on innovation with it. So is that a good simplistic overview of what you just presented to me?
Yeah, that's really well said. We wanted to try and package sort of the things that the city can do now and what is realistic now. And really, that last slide was to show that there's, this counts on a need for innovation. And what I was trying to also communicate is that everyone else is counting on some additional innovation. But this does certainly give some direction to what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeForre?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and all the good work so far. I want to take the opportunity to ask you your opinion or your knowledge on what's happening on the electric generation side of things. I know that it's, electrification is a big objective here, that, you know, it's a clean, well, it's as clean as its original sources, right? But I understand that there's growing, obviously, demand for electricity for everything from AI-driven data centers, you know, they're popping up all over the place. We all think it's great, but they all are a bunch of, you know, microchips that need a lot of energy to run. And then, of course, there's growing demand from a growing, you know, population and a diminishing source in terms of coal that's being phased out pretty successfully in this area. But we find ourselves, I think, running out of options in terms of, we've got, I think Calver Cliffs is looking at perhaps a couple more reactors, but I don't know that there's much more in the pipeline for this, for this region. And I'm curious as to, you know, if there's a macro level, you know, kind of overview you can give as to where energy generation is going.
Yeah, you nailed it. I mean, electricity generation is going to be, continue to hopefully move in the direction of renewables or nuclear. Nuclear's been sort of the hot topic the last few years. And what that provides is a carbon-free energy source in a somewhat small space. Of course, there are some risks associated with that, but that's continued to improve in terms of safety. You know, I think the, what really is the wild card is the growing need for electricity and energy. I personally think it's good that a lot of things are moving towards electrification, because we can clean up that electricity source, we can continue to add renewables to the grid. The cost for developing solar and wind continues to go down, which is a good sign. And ultimately, I mean, it's just a matter of continuing to develop and really that industry sort of catching up to demand. If, as of at least a year or two ago, you could power the entire nation with roughly the size of Rhode Island in terms of just solar power. So we've got plenty of space. Of course, there's a lot of other things we're using our land for, but, you know, the industry's just still trying to catch up. And really, since COVID, there's been a lot of supply shortage that has slowed that down.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, I'd like to say thank you very much for your presentation and what you did. At this time, this isn't eligible for action, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve, adopt, excuse me, adopt Resolution R-114-25.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you need to be over for a second?
Nope.
So I can just, I can just close it out.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. At this time, I would like to declare the city council meeting, December 1st, 2025, closed. And thank you, everyone, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye, 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 aye.